Good evening. Today is Monday, December 18th, 2017. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. If we could start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for being here this evening. And for those of you watching at home, we have just come from executive session, and we are now going to start with our board comments. Dash, would you like to start tonight?
Hello, everyone. Just want to wish everyone out there a happy holiday, and hopefully you enjoy your time off. And if you have not seen the principal's weekly newsletters yet, it's a nice read. They do a great job. So please, try to open it up and read it. There's a lot of useful information that could have helped in the past and could help in the future. Thank you.
Pete?
I don't have anything really to say tonight, other than just Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and hope everybody has a happy, healthy New Year. And that's all I have tonight.
Cynthia?
Just the same thing. I just wish everyone happy holidays. I'm sure all the students and teachers are looking forward to much-needed rest out there to come out and improve. I also wanted to say the concerts thus far for middle school, high school were really phenomenal. I mean, you could tell with all, there were so many people there. So that's all that I have to say.
Good evening, everybody. Just the same as the others. Happy and healthy holidays to everybody and their family, and Happy New Year. Just a quick update from our athletic director, Austin. For those who are free, on the 21st, the Tuckahoe varsity basketball team is playing their rival Bronxville at Bronxville. You'd love to see us come out and support the boys. We'd like to congratulate Coach Visconti on his 150th win. There will be an athletic presentation on Wednesday, the 20th, at the Cottle Auditorium at 7:00 PM. The presentation is for all secondary students and their family. All student athletes and their parents should attend. The Tuckahoe coaching staff will be in attendance that night. And he wanted just to remind everybody, although winter really has just begun, that starting in February, registration will open up for the spring sports. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. I just did want to make a comment or two about our vote that took place on December 5th. I wanted to let the community know that the board has been deliberating and talking and really trying to figure out how we are going to meet the challenges that now face us. We do want you to know that no decisions have been made. We are definitely taking everything under consideration. We are open to anything that the community has to bring to us. We have been saying that for many, many months now, and that has not changed. So just an open invitation for any community members who would like to give us their input, their feedback, their thoughts on it. And we will talk about it again more tonight, and we are also going to be discussing it again when we meet in January. I also do want to wish everyone the best of the holiday season has to offer. Please enjoy your families, your time with friends. For all the children, please be safe, and a healthy and happy New Year to everybody. Carl?
Okay, good evening. We have a good-sized audience, and we appreciate you coming out the week before the holiday. My best to all the families and our staff for happy and healthy holiday as well. I do have a few announcements. First, I'd like to start by congratulating Ms. Lynn Davies. Lynn is our crossing guard down at the Cottle Elementary School, and she has decided to retire. Friday is her last day, so if you want to wish her well, I think she's been doing this for 27 years, keeping our children safe in all types of weather and dealing with some stressful situations out there. So we wish her well in retirement. Our best wishes go with her. Also, I want to congratulate all of our music students. We had an outstanding high school concert last week, as well as a middle school concert. Band, strings, orchestra, all of our students just performed with passion, with excitement, and I think it really helped us all get into the holiday mood watching those concerts. This Wednesday, the 20th, Cottle School has been switched from the Cottle Auditorium up to the middle-high school auditorium. We have about 100 additional seats in the middle-high school auditorium. A little bit of a shift for the kids to get used to that auditorium, but it enables us to give parents three tickets per family as opposed to two. So we encourage you to join us. I'm sure it'll be a wonderful concert, just like the middle and high school concerts. That is 7:00 PM on the 20th Wednesday evening. Also, I would like to make mention, Michelle talked a bit about the capital project, and I believe we have some community members here that probably at the end of the meeting will be invited up to make some comments as well, or maybe at the beginning. But there have been a number of emails asking about what happened with our bond newsletter. So as most people who live in the community know, for every budget which occurs in May and for special votes, we always do a newsletter mailing to the entire district. And this is really the only surefire way to get to everyone. People who are, you know, here with students in the district are on our email list, our Blackboard Connect. There are some community people on that as well. Our PTA does an awful lot of communication to our parents. But if you're not a parent yet, or if you were a parent and now your children have graduated, the only way we can get to you is, if you're not tuning into board meetings and watching us on television or visiting our website, is for us to do this mailer. Know that the, this may sound like a bit of an excuse, and I first apologize on behalf of the district, but it was not fully within our control. On November 17th, the White Plains Post Office confirmed receipt of the mailer. They always promise, they don't guarantee, but the post office does promise for bulk mail from three to 10 business days. So we were very deliberate. We could have delivered it before November 17th. November 17th is the correct date. However, we were very deliberate that we wanted parents and community members to receive it about one week before. If we send it one month before, it tends to get discarded and you forget. And, you know, in our opinion, the perfect reminder would be one week before. We were on schedule for that, but the way the system works is White Plains is the distribution center, and they distribute. We have two post offices that deliver to Tuckahoe. Both the Tuckahoe, to two zip codes, and then Bronxville delivers to 10708. What we learned, and we kept contacting the supervisors in White Plains, as well as Bronxville, as well as Tuckahoe, they were checked into White Plains, but were not forwarded to the local post offices for distribution. After several phone calls and promises that we have them, we will do our best to get them out. Understand, it's the holiday. We just had Cyber Monday and Black Friday, and there's a lot of volume during the holidays. Ms. Lou personally went up to White Plains. I covered the two local post offices, and we confirmed that they were in White Plains, but they never left White Plains. Now, I must admit, I knew there were some issues with the post office, but I wasn't aware of how widespread those issues were. So we did everything. We filed a complaint with Congressman Engel. We tried to get help. We reached out to the supervisors. And the board, by Friday, when we knew that mailer may not hit, the board convened a special meeting on the weekend. They authorized a reprint, nearly 2,500 pieces of this mailer. Our business staff came in on Sunday, ran them through the first-class machine. Now, all of this cost more money. And then on Monday morning, as soon as the doors opened, the two local post offices, those supervisors were fantastic because they took them and they said to me, "Mr. Albano, we will not guarantee you today, you know, one-day delivery, but we believe we will get them either today or tomorrow." And we saw that as better than nothing. We were not happy with it. I think we've learned some valuable lessons. And of course, what we learned this past week is White Plains must have eventually located them and distributed them, because people got the original mailing three or four days after the vote. And again, we apologize. It was not fully within our control. We've learned some valuable lessons, and for the budget coming up in May and for all future elections, we, and we may have to spend some more money, but we will have a backup plan. We may have to do two mailers, but we are very committed to getting you that information. So I know there were some complaints. I, you know, I know people said, "Well, gee, you know, maybe the outcome would have been different." You know, I, I'm not, maybe, but I'm not sure about that. And, you know, we did look at, we did a lot of research on the demographics and the results and the statistics of the election. You need to understand the turnout was actually very strong. So out of the past 10 elections, it was number three. As far as voter turnout, there were only two elections where we had slightly higher numbers. Now, although I know people, and particularly parents, are disappointed in the outcome, many people did come out and exercise their right to vote. So as Michelle said earlier, we are open. At this point, we are not saying, you know, "Never again." We're not, we're not giving up. The school still has needs, and we're very committed to making sure that our students and our staff have the highest quality, you know, classroom space and conditions and safety features to work with. But I think we need to still hear from the community, and it pleases me to see so many people here, because I do believe a lot of you will come up and speak. However, that being said, my priority, and I did send out a letter, let me just look at the date for you. I believe it went out on December 14th, which was Thursday. And I just want to clarify, my letter was not to say that, you know, we're giving up on any future bonds. The letter was to say that I need to focus now on September, because a lot of the needs that were being addressed through this $20 million proposal are there. They are real. Just because the bond was defeated doesn't mean the needs are all of a sudden solved. So what I'm going to do, and tonight I'm going to ask the board to consider extending the contract with the architects, just to work on those things that I believe are immediate needs, that need to be addressed, so our kids are safe and have a decent place to learn this fall. And it's a little hard to understand if you don't work in schools, but that planning happens now. You know, we don't plan for September, in July or August. It needs to happen now. And, you know, I see Dr. McDonald in the back, who is the assistant superintendent, but the entire administrative team starts that planning process. Schedules have to be developed. Based on the schedules, we learn our staffing needs. We present our staffing needs to our business official, and then we present a budget publicly to this school board, and they adopt a budget in April, and that budget goes out to the public in May. So we have to move quickly, focus on September, but that doesn't mean we are not open to listening, to feedback and opinions about potentially, at some point in time, going out with a follow-up bond. That being said, I turn it over back to Michelle.
Okay. Comments from Director of Finance? Lee?
Sure, thank you. I want to mention that we had our first Budget Advisory Committee meeting. That took place on December 11th. The committee met and discussed two things. We discussed the budget calendar and some of the key budget growth factors that the state has started to release and present to us, to see where we might start to look at developing a budget. It's still very early, and there's a lot more information to come in the next month to six weeks, but we're taking a look at where we are and starting to plan, waiting to hear from more of the administration. Secondly, we also talked about our Treasurer Faith Sparks presented some ideas to increase the amount of information that we will be providing the board in our monthly Treasurer's Report. We showed the Budget Advisory Committee some of the ideas that we had for providing additional information on our various smaller funds that we have. Some more information on reconciling book balances to the bank statements, which, as we present those reports to you, I'll go through them with you and show you the additional information there, as well as a monthly update on the interest rates that the district is earning on our investments. And then finally, on my facilities hat, we are scheduling some operations and repairs for the week between that everyone's off, the recess week. Our custodians are here, and we will be doing some minor repairs and improvements around the district so that we can take care of them while the students aren't here. So.
Great. Thank you, Lee.
Sure.
Comments by the PTA and the Tuckahoe School Foundation? Allison?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Albano, Michelle, and Cynthia for meeting with me last week to go over the feedback emails that I got after our bond. I had sent an email out to the community asking for feedback, and I had a lot of responses, and I really appreciate you taking the time and your willingness to listen. And also, thank you to all of those in the community who did send emails with your feedback. That kind of communication is extremely valuable and really helps us advocate for the children. In the beginning of December, the PTA hosted the Tours of Egyptian Galleries of the Metropolitan Museum of Art. Marissa Jaffe, who's one of our Cottle Moms, was our docent, and she does a fantastic job. Parents and children were amazed by all of her knowledge. Last week, we had our Cottle Holiday boutiques for all of our students. They loved that day. They just are totally thrilled with all of their purchases for their family. Thank you to all the parents who sent in money for their children to shop. We're starting a new winter session of our after-school enrichment classes. They begin January 8th. Registration is going on now for those classes for grades K through 8. We have a strong lineup of STEAM-based classes, everything from STEAM Lab 101 to coding classes to creative writing. The fall classes were very successful, and we look forward to the winter session. Our Young at Arts program held their winter concert, and the students were able to sing with Broadway star Laura Shoup. That was a really fantastic experience for those children. They did a great job. We partnered with our Cottle teachers to have the students write thank-you letters to our servicemen and women who were serving in Afghanistan, and we had them sent out today, and they are promised to reach them in time for the holidays. Coming up in January, we have Cottle Math Night on January 11th at 6:00 PM. We have the Mathnasium Company coming in to run table games based on math concepts for all of our Cottle families. It's sure to be a fun night. On January 25th, we have our Second Annual Pocketbook Bingo Night, which was a huge success last year, and we're looking forward to that again. And lastly, we would just like to thank the board for all of your support in all that you do for the community. The PTA wishes you a happy holiday season, and we hope you have a great New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Allison. Tuckahoe School Foundation, any comments? No. Okay. Okay. This is now the first recognition of the audience, and this is on agenda items only. So I'm going to ask anyone who'd like to speak on the agenda, if they'd like to come forward. No. 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 Nothing, I'm sorry. Nothing off the agenda? Okay. All in favor? Okay, we're going to move to business of the board. This is the second reading of policy. Let's see, what's the policy number?
100.
I'm sorry, Policy 100. This is our second reading, which means that this has already been discussed at our last board meeting. It is posted on our district website. We are open to comments from the public. We're not going to read the policy, because it has been made public. If anyone would like to comment before our next meeting, at our next meeting, we will be voting on a resolution to amend that policy. Lauren, was there anything specific there that you wanted to remind us of on that policy?
There are just changes on...
There are state-regulated changes, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And this, if I could just add, you know, this policy just is the district's commitment to making some changes on the website to make it more accessible for people with disabilities. So there's some specifics with regards to font and format, colors and different things, you know, so we make sure we're communicating effectively with all of our community, including those with disability.
Thank you, Carl. Number two, accept a donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a donation of $100 for the Tuckahoe High School English Department. Increase the revenue budget code A2705, gifts and donations $100, and the expenditure budget code A2110450-02-1000, regular school supplies, English high school $100. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
I just would like to say thank you to the O'Toole family for their generous donation. We'll put it to good use.
All in favor? Number three, accept a donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a donation of $250 for the William E. Cottle School. Increase the revenue budget line A2705, gifts and donations for $250, and increase the expenditure budget line A2110450-01-000, school supplies, William E. Cottle, in the amount of $250. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Dash, discussion?
I just want to also thank Mr. Carl Lender. He is making this donation in the memory of Andrea Koplik, who was a staff member here for many, many years and very well-respected and loved. So he is making this donation in her memory, and we thank him.
All in favor? Number four, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Heart Song Inc. for the period of September 6, 2017, through June 30, 2018, for creative arts therapies at a rate of $120 per 45-minute session, not to exceed $16,000. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
Just that, this is our second year with Heart Song, and they do an incredible job of working with our children with autism, providing music and art instruction, and it is something to see. They have true expertise, and we appreciate Dr. McDonald arranging for a second year of this service.
All in favor? Number five, approve an agreement. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has received a proposal dated December 12, 2017, from Kyre, Garment, and Davidson Architects PC to assist the school district with examining, one, alternatives for reconfiguring current facilities to provide additional instructional space for its kindergarten-to-fifth-grade students; two, relocating the district's administrative offices; three, exploring feasibility of the energy performance contract for certain infrastructure work; four, analyzing the conditions of the existing synthetic turf; and five, developing budgets for these proposed actions. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District describe services as more fully described in the December 12, 2017 proposal received from Kyre, Garment, and Davidson Architects PC for a sum not to exceed $27,500, which award is subject to the completion of a written agreement acceptable to the school district that will be reviewed and approved by the school district's attorney in consultation with the superintendent of schools. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the written agreement with Kyre, Garment, and Davidson Architects PC that has been reviewed and approved by the school district's attorney in consultation with the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and powers the President of the Board of Education to execute such agreement on behalf of the school district for the above-described services and to take all the actions necessary to implement the purposes of this resolution. Is there a motion? Dash, second. Pete, discussion?
So what I will say, I've made this recommendation to the Board of Education. KGND are the architects that have been working with us for well over 12 months on the design of the capital bond referendum that we presented to the public on December 5th. So they are very, very familiar with our building's needs and design and what plans we had and we put forth to the community. I am recommending this extension of a contract with them, because, as I said earlier, I believe there are things that simply cannot be put off any longer. There were many areas of concern in our facilities and with space that we were waiting to see the outcome of the bond, and many of these things would have been worked on at this current time. If the bond had been approved, KGND would have still been working for us, but they would have been on commission. It would be a different structure. Because the bond was defeated, now we need to compensate them if we would like them to continue to provide us with guidance. My objective here, and it's a bit open-ended, it says not to exceed $27,500. It's not a guarantee to pay them that amount. So it's up to that amount, and what this resolution does, if the board approves it, is it gives me the authority to start working with the school attorneys, to be specific, and try to identify, and Ms. Lou would be a part of this discussion, along with the administrative team, but to identify what is the most important things that need to be addressed, so we can have our students in classrooms safely this September. And then, of course, it talks about the board president having the authority to execute it. So this is not a resolution that would prevent us, for example, from considering a larger project. If that's something we wish to, you know, reconsider and revisit, we still can pursue that, but this is simply for the immediate needs and what I believe, and the administrative team and the board believes, needs to happen for September. Any questions from our board members or comments?
No, I guess just to reiterate, I think it's important, is that these things we're going to be done are needed, we're going to need to be done for September anyway, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So, and because the bond did not get passed, this time, if we present it again, maybe, but in order to engage KGND, you had, we had to go this route.
Exactly.
In order to work with you to come up with a plan.
Yes.
But if it would have gone through, they would have continued to work with you, and then that service would have been paid through commission on the overall project.
Exactly. The five things that Michelle read, alternative plans for instructional space, and considering, you know, relocating district offices to create instructional space, energy performance contract, all of that would have been, all of that work would have been done with KGND. So it's really doing what we intended to do from the very start.
Right, and I'll add to that. In our information sessions, when this question was asked, what are you going to do during the construction or in the meantime? And we did say that we would rely on our architects' experience to provide that information to us during that time, that that is their expertise, and that they would guide us through that. And at that time, it would have been part of their fees. So now, because...
So now, because with the bond failing, we are basically finished with them, as far as the bond is concerned, and we have to have a separate contract with them. And again, the contract, this resolution is not the specific contract, it just authorizes the superintendent to work with our attorneys to prepare a contract that we will then approve, once we know what the scope of that work looks like. So again, a little open-ended, as the superintendent just said, but again, filling the immediate needs that will be there, that we've always said will be there in September of 2018. Any other comments? All in favor? Personnel. Number one, increase the teaching load. Resolve to increase the teaching load of Christina Sarafin by a point two FTE for the period of December 11, 2017, through January 22, 2018, at a rate as per the TTA contract. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion?
This is just a temporary job assignment for someone who is out, and we're using one of our high school staff members, certified teacher, to cover it while the person is out.
Thank you. Number two, extend a leave replacement. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Number two, extend a leave replacement. Resolve to extend the leave replacement of Valerie Crody through June 30, 2018. Is there a motion? P., second. Cynthia, discussion?
Just that Ms. Karadia has been with us in previous years as a teaching assistant, has done a leave replacement for the first half of this year, and by all accounts from our administrators, she is doing a very solid job. We are extending her now through the end of the school year.
All in favor? Number three, appoint coaches. Resolve to appoint the following coaches. Joseph Tools, modified boys' basketball coach, winter, 17, 18, $5,101. Mary O'Reilly, assistant varsity softball coach, spring, 2018, $6,234. Thomas Cruz, JV girls' softball coach, spring, 2018, $6,800. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. P. Discussion? All in favor? Number four, approve an hourly rate. Resolve on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Donna Rozell as a clerical worker in the special education department on an as-needed basis from December 19 through, December 19, 2017, through June 30, 2018, at a rate of pay of $46.80 per hour, not to exceed $936. Is there a motion? Rob, second. P. Discussion?
And this is basically a previous, very well-trained special education secretary is coming back to provide, she has expertise in the area of Medicaid billing. It's a very complex process, very nuanced and tedious, and she's gonna work with one of our secretaries now to just bring her up to speed. It's a temporary thing, not to exceed $936.
All in favor? Okay, we're gonna move now on to the second recognition of the audience. If anyone would like to come forward, please give us your name and your address, if you don't mind.
No.
No, roll down.
Whatever you want, John, it's all yours. It's all yours.
Bill Carney, 101 Middleton Place. I think most people are probably here just to find out what the plan is for, if there is one at this point, for the bond moving forward.
Okay, I, great question, and the obvious question in the room. And as I said when we opened, we don't have an answer right now. We are gathering our information, we are looking for input from the community, but again, as the superintendent said, the needs are there, and the needs are real. So right now, our immediate concern is to address those needs. We plan to, shortly, I would say maybe early in the year, you know, the rest of the Board can also add in, answer that, and know where we're gonna go. And without the input, you know, we don't know right now. So we're gonna give it a little bit of time, and we're gonna take in all the information, and we're gonna have to make some very difficult decisions going forward.
Okay. I was at one of the walkthroughs and the meetings, and I asked, I said, if this unfortunately doesn't pass, what, you know, what are the steps that we have to go? And I think Mr. Albano said, you have to have notification of 45 days. Is that the case? You have to give the public 45 days before you vote again?
You do, so, well, there's two things. That, and you have to be, if it's the same or similar proposition, you have to wait 90 calendar days from December 5, from the day of the first vote. And then you still are required to do 45 days in advance, public notice, which means we notice the project in local newspapers. I think we use two newspapers, The Journal and Ms. Trul, the other one is... And Eastchester Review. So there's, you know, that legal requirement of public notice 45 days before, so 90 days would take us to just about March.
And the 45 days is on top of that 90 days?
No.
No.
It's 90 days, not 45.
And then within that, you have to make sure we notice 45 days in advance. We offer public notice. So theoretically, you could be back out there in March, if the Board decided to do that.
And then how much would that delay? If the bond had passed in December, if we voted again in March, how much would that delay the construction from what you previously planned?
Okay, that's another very good question.
That's the bad news.
It came up, it came up frequently, and we did about 15 information sessions with various, and thank you for attending, I know at least one or two. And that question did come up quite often. So the way public construction works is, is we have, you know, strict guidelines that we need to follow. So we have to do our design work, we have to get state ed approval on that design, and that's, that's the part that actually takes the longest, is state ed approval. And there are no guarantees there, it's kinda like the post office, I guess. And you have to, you know, if there, if there's, you know, very heavy volume, it takes longer. Sometimes things move along more quickly. There are a lot of bonds right now up at state ed, there's a bit of backlog. So our estimate is that the time it's taking now, and we see the approval time of other districts, and then after that, there's a bidding process, again, all governed by law. So if we had approved this in December, the heavy construction could have happened in the summer of 2019. Now, if the Board decided to have this back out for a public vote, let's say in March, and it received approval this time around, you don't lose three months, you lose 12 months. And the reason for that is, although the state approval may only be three months behind, the heavy construction can't happen when children are in the building. So one big part of the plan, you may recall, was a second story on Cottle. Well, the framing of that second story only could happen during the summer months. So, and even if you vacated below the area that would have the second story built, you still can't do that heavy work with children in the building. So, yes, you know, it's a 12-month delay, so we are talking about the summer of 2020, if we went back out and a bond was approved.
Okay. And then the fact that it only missed by, or didn't get passed by 36, 37 votes, and the fact that the mailer, you know, the screw-up of the post office and the mailer, is that reason enough to put the bond up again as it currently stands?
Well, and if I could emphasize, you know, the mailer is not a legal requirement.
Right, no.
But of course, but of course, it's best practice, and we're very committed to it. But, you know, I think that that's something that the Board, I'm gonna let the Board weigh in and give their opinions on that one, you know, but my thinking is this. Going out with a bond and having it not pass is not good for our community. And earlier I talked about, we did at least 15 community information sessions, there was always a Q and A at the end, and we got very, in fact, there's probably no criticism of the project itself. There's some people that didn't like the price tag, and that's understandable. Taxes are very high in Tuckahoe, and we respect and appreciate that. But really, we got no feedback as to the design, or the intent, or what we were trying to accomplish educationally, or from a safety perspective. We simply weren't not getting any negative feedback. So we moved forward, and we were confident, but, you know, it was defeated. And as I said earlier, there was a pretty strong election turnout. I know, I know that may, you know, the numbers of 411 and, you know, total of like 860 votes, I know that doesn't seem strong, but comparatively, like I said, it was actually a pretty decent turnout. And I think, you know, if you are to go out again, I think we'd probably wanna hear, well, what is different? You know, you know, are there community members? I have heard some people, and I thank all those who emailed. We tried our best to respond to them, there were quite a few, and we appreciate them, and we got a lot of valuable feedback there. I heard a lot of people say, well, gee, you know, if I knew. Other people said, well, we just assumed it was going to pass. It seemed like a great plan, you know, and I was busy that day. So, you know, you get a lot of different feedback. I think we're, you know, we're really looking towards our community to let us know, you know, what direction to move in. You have a number of options, you know, you could scale back, you could go right back out with the same plan. We could take a break and maybe revisit this somewhere in the future, but I think we're eager to hear from our community. And I even was aware, you know, one parent told me that there was a petition, an online petition going around, and we certainly are interested in that, because, you know, to see if, you know, there's a large number of people that are encouraging us to go back out is important. But I'm doing a lot of the talking here, I think maybe I should turn to Board members.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, that when we, as a Board, back in June, started to look at the project again, just to give a little bit of history here, this project's first started, when we first started about, talking about a capital project, and we had put together a facilities committee to work on it, we started at a price tag of about a $32 million project, and then it went into the range to about $28 million, $26 million. And we were very deliberate back in June, July, August, not to rush, because we wanted to make sure that the plan we decided on as a Board, that we felt was something that we would get the community buy-in for. We could have adopted the resolution that we had agreed on in August, but we held off, and we didn't vote on it until October, because we were deliberate in wanting to hear from the community. And we left it open, and we said, look, if there is something that, you know, needs to be tweaked, or that there's a concern, or if it is even the $20 million price tag, we would like to hear that before we raised our hand on that resolution. And quite frankly, we didn't hear that. And we took that as a show of support, and we went forward with it, and we did it because we felt that these are the needs. I mean, you've heard us say it over and over again. So that's where we are at. You know, we put a lot of time into something that we, it wasn't that we only wanted it to pass, we wanted the community buy-in and the understanding. Now, are there things we could have done differently to do that, to accomplish that? Sure, this has been a learning experience for all of us, but it has to be a two-way dialogue, and we have to hear. So, you know, now, we're gonna hear, and we're gonna listen, and then we're gonna make a decision. And that's the only way I think we can go forward at this point.
No, I mean, I think it was a great plan, and one of my fears is, I don't think there's a lot of fat you can trim on it, so I'd be scared to see what we would propose as an alternative. And to what Mr. Albano said, you know, a lot of people that I spoke to, or my wife spoke to, you know, had the same sentiment of where they thought, oh, well, I thought it was gonna pass, I didn't vote, or I forgot to vote. So I was disappointed. I'd love to hear, you know, Allison, I know she got a bunch of feedback, I'd love to hear what some of the people who voted against it, what their feedback was. My last question, I don't mean to take up the whole night, but I'm assuming if we have the architects and they, we have them working on another plan, it's gonna take more than 90 days to kind of vet that plan and get it passed, get it, you know, have all you guys look at it, get it passed, get it up to a spot where we can vote on it. In the interim, is it possible to vote on the, vote on the bond the way it stands now, and still have the architects work on an alternative if it doesn't get passed again, so they're not wasting more time?
Yes, I think that's our intention, is to, you know, still be open-minded and listen to feedback. The Board, I know, spent a lot of time analyzing the vote and the statistics behind it, trying to understand, you know, what our community wants. But yes, I think, you know, the idea is to not let go of the idea of a potential, you know, revote or rescheduling of a vote, but at the same time, addressing the needs for September in a responsible way. You know, in March would be far too late. And so if we started to think about our immediate needs, whether they be safety or classroom space, we just simply could not start on that in March, it would be far too late. So I think the idea is to pursue both simultaneously.
Thank you.
And just to comment on that call, if we were to propose the same bond moving forward, and then we did do some work in the interim, we're not, we don't have to borrow the whole 19-7, or 25, 20.5, so that would come off. So any work that's done between now and then could potentially lower that amount. I think that's important.
That's correct.
So when you plan moving forward. And just, I, before, Steve, before you step in, just a comment. So I was, I was traveling last week when we had the vote, and, but I did have my absentee ballot submitted. But I'll tell ya, and I'm sure it's a lot of people out there, I went through a whole range of emotions, and I still have a whole range of emotions that I go through, from frustration, to a little bit of angst, to, you know, what could we have done better? And I think Michelle really summed it up really well. I mean, you know, for two years, I've been talking about this and working on it, and we really need to hear from the people out there. I mean, there's over 5,000 registered voters in the district. 800 people voted, that's it. Now, Carl said that's what our normal turnout is, and he's right, this was probably the third highest one out of the last 10. But if people really want it, we have to rally and get those people to come out and vote. And, you know, I don't know how much more we could have done. Yes, the newsletter went out the wrong way, and it was disappointing to me, 'cause I really feel like this could have helped the district and put us on the map, and maybe separated us from other districts in vocally. And so, we need to hear from you. I mean, again, she kinda know that we need to hear what you have to say, and we need you guys to speak up, send emails, you know, I've seen, I've received more emails in the last week than I received in the last two years. But, you know, unfortunately, it had to come to this. So we really need the community to get behind us, and I know we're all busy, and I know it's gonna cost us money, I really do. But I think we're all committed to living here, we're all taxpayers, we're all on homes, and I know it's hard for some of the people in the community, but I do believe it's the right plan, and I think the Board fully supports it, so hopefully now we have everyone's attention, and we'll continue to hear from you.
I've got one question. Paul, what would be the latest that a vote would have to go out, whether it be the same exact one, or another one to start in 2020?
Well, good question. As I said earlier, you know, a three-month delay is really a 12-month delay, so, you know, I think, you know, if the Board felt prepared to go back out in March, you could go as early as March. Probably September, October. And then you still would be, your target would be heavy construction, summer of 2020.
Hey, guys, Stephen Pagno at 21 Crawford Street. And I came tonight 'cause I was so involved in this before I left the Board. First thing I wanna say, I'm disappointed in the community for not voting in favor of this bond. The countless meetings that we had, the feedback that we got from the community when I was on the Board before it was even finalized, was numerous. We spent majority of our time talking about that and other issues that really paled in importance to what the bond was. I think we spent a lot of time with Board members concentrating on these minute things that really make no sense, because the community gets in an uproar about coaches, and gets in an uproar about other things that really mean nothing at the end of the day, in comparison to what this bond was. I have seen more people come and vote for Board members recently than I saw come for this bond. That was the first thing I'm really disappointed in the community, the fact that people felt it was more important to come vote for a, not that voting for Board members aren't important, I was a Board member myself, but really, this bond was a lot more important to the future of the school than the five people that sit on the Board. So the people in the community that didn't vote, you know, I say shame on you if you're upset now, because it's not like we didn't know that this vote was coming, and the excuse of, I forgot, I didn't get the mailer. Believe me, in my own household, my wife and I are fighting about the mailer, she feels that the mailer was a reason why people didn't vote, and my response is, being on the Board, believe me, people knew that this vote was coming, and they should have voted. The second thing is, I think you need to put the vote out again, and this is the opinion I have, as a public citizen now. I would put the same vote out again in three months, and that's what I'm gonna ask the Board to do. The margin of error on that was so small, that if you got a statistician to come in and look at the difference in those votes, they'd probably tell you it's a dead heat. And the fact that there are people that did get the mailing late, and may not have known, and, and you know what, I always, and what I told my wife is, that probably affects the people that voted no even more so, because they didn't know that the vote was happening, 'cause they don't have kids in the school, so if you put the mailer out, you might have attracted more people to a no vote, but... But the fact that we don't know, I think we owe the school the chance to vote again. I knew when this failed that the delay for another year was going to happen, but I think you need to use that to your advantage because if you put that vote out in three months and it does fail again, God, hopefully it doesn't, but if it does, you still have nine months to sort of, or six months to sort of come up with an alternative plan. Because what I would say is I think there's been enough outcry in the community that people will pay attention this time and I think people will look to come to vote and I bet you, you'll get a lot more than the 800 or 900 people that voted this time to come forward. And if we fail at that point, then, you know, I think a lot of people will feel comfortable that, okay, this is a plan that people don't want. What I heard from people out there was, believe it or not, I heard more people tell me they voted no because they didn't think that the bond was enough and they felt like there should be more. And I think the answer I gave them is, well, it's not just one bond. If you wanted more, we could have gone and looked at a bond later on. I have an eighth grader and a 10th grader, I probably will never see the benefits of this bond. I voted yes and I feel really sorry for the kids in Cottle that aren't even in the school yet because I don't think people fully appreciate the space that that school has to deal with. And it's a crime that those kids have to stay in conditions like that where they're cramped in classrooms and some of these special needs kids are in rooms that really aren't classrooms, but probably large closets. And to think that people could vote no at giving them space is just horrific. And I challenge any of you to come up to me in the street and tell me why you voted no because I'd like to tell you why I voted yes. The last thing I would say and the part that really hit at home for me is, we voted no against purchasing the house on the corner. That house is now sold and it's not going to become available anymore. The idea again was to put the district offices in that house to give us more room here. And when I went to the winter concert, the middle school winter concert, and I saw eight, nine rows of people standing to try to watch their kid perform, I didn't even feel bad for them. I really didn't. I said, you know what, if you didn't vote for that house, that would have given you an auditorium and I know we've said it as board members, some of us, that buying that house would have given us a place for our community to come and celebrate our kids. And I know it was a controversial thing, but we lost that opportunity and now we're stuck with an auditorium that's too small to support a community like this. And that's really sad, it really is. So, I ask you to put the vote up again in three months. I ask the people that didn't vote yes or no to get up and go vote and they should be, like Rob, like you said, 5,000 people in this community. There's probably 1,100 families in this school district alone and you take a husband and spouse and you're talking a couple thousand people just have kids in the school. Every single one of them should come vote and we should get a vote that really is indicative of what our community thinks. I don't blame the board at all. I think you guys did a great job on this thing. I just think the only mess-up was the mailing and I, from my understanding, it was a post office thing, so there's no blame put there. But I just say, you guys did so much work and had such a good plan again, put it up again and let people vote again. So, thanks, guys.
You know, I just want to add that I think we really need, what, you know, what we have tried to do as a board is what we're looking for are informed voters. So, we're not just looking for support, we are looking for people to be informed on what are the needs of the district. And we're really not going to speculate on why people voted the way they did or challenge people about why they voted the way they voted because that is a personal decision. But, and I think we need to be respectful of that. But what we're looking for is how do we better inform our community of the needs of our district? Then, we can have an informed electorate. So, I think that, I just want to hesitate, I think everyone is open to say, to come to the mic and to speak to us and I said earlier, we're encouraging it, but I do want us to be respectful of our community and the way people choose to vote and I think what we're looking for is just an informed voter. And once you've come for the information and you've received the information and then you've made an educated decision, that's your decision to make.
Natalia Vivas, 28 Archer Drive.
Marissa Horowitz, Jaffe, 70 Archer Drive.
So, we are part of the group that put together the petition. We're reading a letter from Shay Scanlon-Loma, who is...
Singing at Carnegie Hall tonight.
...on Archer Drive, but I'm not sure what number. So, dear members of the Board of Education, on Saturday, December 16th, I wrote a letter to friends asking them to sign a petition for a second vote on the school bond and explaining why I voted yes. The petition is attached as Exhibit A, which I'll hand over. My letter is attached as Exhibit B. Approximately 48 hours later, I present to you a petition signed by more than 400 people asking you to schedule a vote on a school bond that is the same or substantially similar to the one previously voted upon December 5th, 2017. I sent the letter and petition only to friends, people I've worked with on the PTA and other parents in my kids' classes and a few people who had expressed concerns to my friends about the bond, fewer than 100 families. Many of the names I read in this petition, I do not recognize. I share this to demonstrate the reach of this cause. Friends shared the petition with friends who shared with other friends. People were willing not only to sign, but to take additional actions to ensure its success. The residents of the school district might not have acted on December 5th, but they're ready to act now. Voting for or against the bond is a passive anonymous task. It requires neither commitment nor conviction for the cause. What we present to you today is a demonstration of an engagement and fervor for a new vote for a past bond. Over 400 people described their names, their home addresses, their email addresses to a cause, to fight for Tocco schools. More than 200 people added public comments, setting forth their particular interest in the bond. It is these 400-plus people who can not only be counted upon to vote yes, but who will persuade their neighbors to friends and friends to vote, who will drive friends to the poll, who will put signs in their yards and who will engage in the political process of a second bond vote. Please schedule a vote on the same or substantially similar bond as soon as possible. You have momentum, you have the support of a community willing to fight for its schools. Thank you, Shay Scanlon-Loma. And after Shay sent this out, I personally printed part of her email. I put up the petition on a blog post so that it could be linked, printed the email with a QR code and walked around Chester Heights with another one of our neighbors, Erin O'Connor, and we talked to neighbors. We talked to the new moms in the neighborhood who don't have kids in the school. We spoke to a mom who voted no and asked her because we were curious why. We weren't rude, we just wanted to know and we accepted her explanation and moved on. But we went out and did something because we didn't realize, honestly, so many of us, so many people we spoke to either had no idea the vote was going on, even though you've done everything you could. We appreciate everything you've done and we realize that you've put out information because I've read all the emails, I've read the proposals, I've watched the videos and I've watched the presentations, I've done all of that. But there were still a lot of people who weren't informed, a lot of people who ignore your emails. So, those of us, those 400 of us who signed this petition and who harassed all of our family and friends, I'm a coach, a soccer coach, I sent it out to the soccer team, I sent it out to my entire family. We are willing to go out and push this bond because we don't have time. You can't waste time by planning something else. Do what they said, three months, put out the vote. Then, if God forbid, this time around, we can't get more people to come out and actually vote, then you have time to work on something else. But this was a good proposal and it's what the school needs and we are willing to go on the street. We are willing to make phone calls and emails and walk. It was cold on Saturday. It was not like 50 degrees like today, it was cold and there was snow on the ground. So, please.
Thank you.
We will do.
I want to applaud you for doing that, by the way. The initiative is great and all I can say is keep it up. And, you know, understand too that a lot of us here would love to go door-to-door as well. We're not allowed to. We're not allowed to campaign for the current votes. We're, I just want to make that clear so people understand. If it looks like we're being a little reserved sometimes, we are limited in what we can do. We can provide information, as Michelle has said many times, and we offer that information, but we're not allowed to go out and solicit votes. So, we love people like you who are willing to do it.
I was a PTA president in another school district and I realized then that I wasn't allowed to be as active as I wanted to be. So, I purposely don't sign up for anything because I can do whatever I want, however I want it, when I want it.
Yeah.
And I'm a product of the Tocco schools. I graduated from Tocco and I've been in the district for over 20 years. So, I know what our school deserves.
And I think a lot of us have some ideas, like, you know, I didn't realize, and I'm an active parent, how, there's a lot that I didn't know. If I didn't know it, then that's, there's no excuse. Like, I need to be educated, exactly what you were saying, Michelle, about you want an informed voter. I was not an informed voter. So, I think we have some ideas of how we can try and get more of the word out. Like, we're all, like, we've all broken up.
Yeah.
A little late, but we're here.
We do propose...
And thank you for everything you do.
Yes, and one of the proposals is to have, we heard from other school districts where they had kind of town hall meetings in people's homes or in the buildings in Tocco where you have community centers and have that, go to them rather than have them come to us.
Yeah, that was actually done. That was actually done a few times, yeah. But no, that's great, though.
But we will, believe me, I can be very persuasive.
So, I'm just curious, the woman who told you no, what was her reason for saying no?
She has actually never used the school system. She has kids and they've all gone to private school and she didn't want the increase of $50 a month in her taxes. That was it. We tried the whole, well, your property value would also increase, it's not just about the school district, but, but we tried. We tried. Oh, yes.
We, Shay printed out all of the signatures for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Colleen Staunton for Windsor Circle. So, I think I agree with the last two speakers and I'm speaking as a new parent to the district. I have a daughter in kindergarten and another one in two years. So, I think there's real concern and I would like to just reemphasize among those newer parents in the district, the urgency for this vote. You know, we don't, we know it's going to be 2020, but what if there's another three, six-month delay, then it's 2011, or, sorry, 2021 and so on. So, you know, I think that there's concern, we see the new buildings going up in the district and we look at the size of the buildings and what it are now and there's just, you know, a lot of us don't want to wait. And I think the community does have to get involved, right? I mean, you can put all the information out, the PTA can put the emails out, we can understand as parents, but how are those, a year ago, I wouldn't have known, maybe. I mean, I think I pay attention, but there's a lot of people that don't and it's a lesson learned, right? That's our fault. But I think there should be urgency to this matter and I think there's a lot of us that are very concerned and it's an important topic and hopefully we can build on it in various ways. So, just again, you know, as somebody newer, there's a lot of concern and, you know, I hope people woke up. But again, I think the urgency in getting the vote out, we hope it's at the top of your, I know I hear, and you can't speak in certainties, but, you know, we hear that you might talk about it. So, anything that we can do to keep that up, I think we all need to continue that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alex Hall, 13 Harrison Street in Tocco. This is my first meeting. I'm the parent of a four-and-a-half-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old. One will be entering kindergarten next year. So, I just also want to address what Michelle mentioned. I vote in most of the elections, even if it's mayors or county supervisors, but I heard about this election the night before from my friend Chris here who's in the first row and he only knows because he has a daughter in kindergarten here. I was front row here, we're in the Andrus-Tocco preschool crowd and I'm glad Peter said what he did because my suggestion when I was going to come up here, it wasn't to place any blame, but I was going to say, anytime there's an election here, every morning, I take the 7:43 train and there's 20 people who want to shake my hand, Rob Astorino's there, there's a lot of selling, there's a lot of red, white and blue printed materials. There was none for this and now I'm starting to realize, well, you guys can't campaign for this. But there was no selling on this. I found out about the night before from Chris. I'm actually, I tend to be very anti-tax, I tend to be skeptical. So, I read the proposal, my dad's an architect, I like the design, but more importantly, I went out the next day, I encouraged my wife to, she voted. We both voted yes, out of selfishness because we have a four and a two-year-old that are going to be able to benefit from this and I would really like to see this happen, but it needs to be sold. And I don't know how we're going to do it, maybe if it's the head of the PTA, I would volunteer, I could be a captain for a few blocks, but I think we're looking around and wondering why this didn't pass and I just compare and contrast this to other campaigns for mayor, for county supervisor, for really anything and I just, I didn't see much of that. I did, I saw one printed kind of sign about this side by the basketball court on Main Street and then I heard from Chris and really that's about it. So, whatever we can do to get out the vote, I think with losing by 30 to 40 votes, it's, you're right on the cusp there, although I do see what Mr. Albano said is that this brings out negative emotions too. And what I want to counter with is I don't want this just to be a rah-rah thing, there's been a lot of that. But we have to consider that Westchester has the highest property taxes in the nation next to the second highest state taxes in the nation. So, people tend to make larger salaries in the New York area, but we have to put this in context, even if you can't do anything about the high property taxes here, you're talking about people that, a lot of them have kind of had enough and to go $600 more a year, it's definitely worth it for me, but I kind of see it from the point of view for the people who voted no, who if they were paying, you know, 1% to 2% of their property values per year, maybe they could eat it a little bit, maybe they said, yeah, my property would go up. But a lot of people pay close to 3% of the value of their property per annum and so, it's almost kind of like, how much capacity do we have for more debt? So, in summary, I think whatever can be done to sell this better next time, I do feel very uninformed on it. And two, just put this in the context with, there's not a lot of appetite to pay more taxes. So, let's be realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments and I think it really is a question people have to ask themselves, what are they willing to invest in their schools? And what does that mean? And you, you know, said very well what it means in your family, but it means something really in every property owner in this community and they need to understand that. And so, that really is part of the job that, you know, we're challenged with, making people understand that. And the hard part is it comes with a price tag and some people just flatly just cannot pay it. So, that is the struggle and that's the challenge, but I think you have to, people, when we say be informed, is understand what will happen if it doesn't pass and what will that mean for our school community. And I think that's what we really need our community to understand because that doesn't look well. And, you know, and that's a reality. It's hard to say.
I feel like that didn't happen.
Hard to say it.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I am Chris Ferris, 53 Lisbonard. Kind of echo everything that others have said. My question is, is there anything that we can do differently to market this? I understand that there may be some restrictions on what you can do, maybe all you can do is put out, hey, there's, here's the facts, but is there any resources for marketing, whether it's from the PTA or do parents have to pitch in their own money to do something? Because I felt like, I didn't even really know about it till a couple weeks before because I, you know, I'm new to this district as well. But if there were something that were a little bit more urgent that came in the mail that said, look, here's what we need, we need eight new classrooms, we need a new boiler, here's a picture of the boiler and if that breaks down, there's no, high school's got to close. Hey, by the way, we need new bulletproof glass and a security, you know, and here's what hap, so if you don't vote for this, here's what happens. We don't get the eight new classrooms and we're going to have 26 kids in a first-grade class versus the 20 that's optimal. We're not going to have this. You won't have a new, everybody loves their foot, someone mentioned earlier that everybody likes to come out and vote, you know, go crazy about the football coach or the sports coach. Well, you're not going to have a new field. Everybody loves sports. Well, you're not going to have a new field, it's now 10 or 11 years old. So, maybe, you know, I talked to my wife about this, not to volunteer her, but she's, does marketing at NYU, maybe we need to inject a little bit of, I don't want to use the Maybe we need to inject a little bit of, I don't want to use the word fear, but a little fear, some consequences. Like, here's what happens if we vote no. So, I don't know if, I guess the school board probably can't advocate, I don't know what the rules are.
Well, we can't use district funds to promote a yes vote, right? We can't, that, that's, we're not allowed to do that. And if you think about what we, what we have done as a board is, we have approved a proposition to allow the voters to decide.
Right.
So, what we do is we put out the information.
Right.
And that's really the, the limits that we have. Now, could there be more information and more detailed information?
Right.
And communicate the information differently? Yes, we can do all of that. You know, looking back and, and even the folks who, the eleventh hour were upset that they didn't know. They actually knew because they were calling us to tell us they knew. They were just worried that other people didn't know. So, the word was out there. We, we, we do believe that. I don't know what the urgency was on, on folks to vote. That's a different story. So, can we put out more information and different information? Yes. But can we, can we campaign and advocate a certain outcome? No.
I think the word was out there, but I think the word was, this is just my feeling. The word was out there with people who have parents in the dis, children in the district. So, my, my son, who's a preschooler, goes to Andrus Early Learning Center in the Tuckahoe Town Hall. I don't know, how many families there? Hundred, maybe? His two, his two children go there. He didn't know about it. Why? Because he's not on the, you know, mailing list. Yeah, it may have been in the Eastchester Rising newspaper, but, you know, I talked to several other parents, you know, who also were totally unaware. And I think four or five of those parents voted. So, there's four or five votes you wouldn't have had if I didn't just mention it. Now, others, if, if you go, maybe some of this is just you need to go over to Andrus and talk to those people. Maybe you need to go to talk to, there's a, another town, there's another, Kewala. There's like three or four of them. Like, maybe there, right there, you might have gotten the votes you needed. But maybe is there something like, maybe the PTA, is there funds for something like a marketing flyer? And we, it doesn't have to go through the White Plains Postal Office. I mean, get four or five of us. There's only, what, twelve hundred households? And in afternoon, we can drive by and hit every single mailbox with a flyer. I mean, it doesn't even have to be that complicated. Go to Tuck, go to Kinko's. A few people who are marketing professionals like my wife can put something together. Might cost a couple thousand dollars, but if there's funds or if parents are willing to kick some money in for that.
See, we can only support things that we can ensure that everyone has gotten the information.
I see.
So, that's why when we mail it, we know, and that didn't work out so well. But the intent was that everybody would get it. And we can't be, you know, do.
Prostitute.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get it.
If I could.
But parents can do their own thing.
Absolutely. In other words, we can't advocate and, and pretty much all the marketing strategies were run by the school attorneys. Even, even the, the news bulletin that you received on it.
I didn't, I never got it, by the way.
Okay, never.
And my friend, by the way, got it one full week after, no, it was one.
I got it the day after the election.
Oh, but you didn't read, okay.
Yeah, that, that.
You sent it to me like a week after.
That, that was.
No, you, you have a valid argument, especially having a pre-K child and not being in Cottle and, or the middle school. So, that's a great point. That is something we can do different is, is go market to the pre-Ks. That's, that's great. But we, as board members, as superintendent, assistant superintendents, we were out at different locations. And when I tell you, I mean, I'll stay on the positive side, but the turnout at the community center, when I was there twice, we had what, maybe five people with two visits?
Collectively.
Collectively. And, you know, there was a boy that was an eighth grader. Actually, he asked probably the best questions I've heard all year. And, you know, we had Bronxville Manor come over to Cottle and, you know, for the second time, there's probably maybe ten people, twelve people. So, but you're right. The pre-K side of it, that, that was a huge mistake. That would have helped. Sorry, Ray. How are you?
Good. How you doing? Raymond Ianello from nine Central Drive. I have a couple of comments. I think you guys did a great job. Love the project. My comments are that I think the experience of the community dealing with a bond and a no hasn't happened in a very long time. So, I don't think people were thinking about it. Other districts' bonds are coming up like every three years. Last bond here was over ten years ago. And there's a lot of new families that have never experienced a bond in Cottle.
Good point.
So, now, there's no more advertising to be done. The community knows about it now because it was a no. So, I don't think there's need for flyers. I think the need is really put it back up. I think it's going to get the yes and we'll move forward. We lost a year, but I'm going to be here for over twenty, thirty years. So, let's get it done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Rhea Beach, three Lucille Place, Bronxville. I'm just, I live it. I work here and we need it. And it's obvious every day in everything we do. But Michelle said, what do we do? What do we do? Where do we stand? So, my ideas are, if we can go back in and be a little bit more specific as to Cottle infrastructure, ceiling tiles, floors, bathrooms, water fountains, all the aesthetics that you see. Because I think a lot of people were under the assumption of, and I spoke to Allison, I called her right away, because I feel like it was, oh, gym and cafeteria and, you know, STEM classrooms and, you know, all those, those bells and whistles. But I think a lot more has to go into the specifics. Chalkboards, you know, just refreshing classrooms and making every classroom look up to date, state of the art. Yes, the STEM classrooms are great and, and we should have those. But let's make sure the entire school shows that twenty million upon entering it. Over the weekend, I was with a Cottle family, past Cottle family. And she said I didn't vote. And I said, why? And she said, I didn't get a phone call. And I said, what do you mean a phone call? So, I know obviously you guys can't make the phone call to say yes, but maybe to try something where we put it out there with phone call. Go vote. And try something simple like that again. But just so everybody knows, I live it. I work. I have a four-year-old who's coming up. You know, my eight-year-old probably won't see any of it. She'll probably be in the mix of the chaos of trying to figure it all out, but it's necessary. It's so necessary. And it, it's just, good luck to you guys in the next couple of months, because it's a little scary to think about if it doesn't go through.
You're right. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will add and, and maybe Lee can add to that, that many of the items you listed, infrastructure, are in the plan, but were not detailed the way that you just said. So, things like the ceiling tiles and the bathrooms, actually the, in Cottle, the bathrooms are on a separate line item and they are included. But there are, there were several things in the infrastructure. As a matter of fact, I think it's, we, we covered priorities one, two, three and four. So, it was, we were really taking care of a lot of things that if we had to do out of our operating budget, you know, we, we just don't have the, the funds for that. Because if, when we, you know, have to take money out of our operating budget, then that takes away from programming. They're just, and we're in a two percent tax cap environment. I think by now, everybody understands what that means. It's not even two percent. So, the money is just not there. And when we have to start to address the infrastructure, where is the money going to come from? And everyone has to think about that. Where will the money come from? So, if we have, you know, to cut back on staffing or programming because there are needs in the building, you know, remember, you heard it here first, because that's a reality.
Allison Halloran, one fifteen Middleton Place. I just wanted to, to say a couple of things because a couple of comments were directed towards PTA. And I just wanted to defend PTA a little bit. One, with phone calls. In the past, the PTA has made phone calls. We've had our class moms literally call every family in the district. It, what, we decided not to do that with this vote because it is extremely frustrating for the mothers who are sitting there. To make all those phone calls is difficult, time-consuming and not very well-received. And so, the consensus was people don't like to get the phone call and people don't like to make the phone call. And so, to give our volunteers a little less heartache, it was decided that that was not effective. And that School Bay was a much more effective way to reach the entire community. Because with School Bay, we were able in our email to say that, yes, we supported the vote, to give you direct links to click on to the information. All you had to do was click on the link and the video came up and showed you pictures of the boiler that desperately needed to be helped. And, you know, gave you and, and told you where to go to vote. And we felt like that was much more effective than to just make a phone call and say, please go out and vote. The PTA also cannot go out and say, vote yes. We're a neutral party. We can say we support it, but we cannot tell you how to vote. It is your choice. As far as flyers, you know, so you mentioned flyers are approximately a couple thousand dollars to run, piece of paper, that most people are just going to throw into the recycle bin and not really even look at. And our PTA budget is only fifty-five thousand dollars. And with that fifty-five thousand dollars, we run over sixty programs for the students of the school. So, we really try to keep as much admin costs out of our budget and make it all go to the kids. And so, that was, that's the main reason why we wouldn't put out a paper flyer, because it's literally throwing money away rather than putting it towards the kids. However, there, we did want to put flyers in just like the Tuesday folders, but we couldn't because the Tuesday folders are school communication. And so, we couldn't use school communication to get people to vote a certain way. So, there's kind of just the background a little bit onto why you didn't get certain, why the PTA didn't go out. I can tell you that I personally, on a personal level, did a ton to try to get it passed. And even with that, even with my friends, and there are a lot of them in the community, it was still very hard. And you still had a lot of people say, I just, the, the general consensus was, I just thought it was going to pass. And, and, you know, they didn't go out. The really positive thing to all of this is, is there is a definite nuisance to board meetings and what the board does and the project. And there is an awakening that has happened in this community that's been a long time coming. And it's really great to see. It's great to see this room filled tonight.
Thank you, Allison.
Good evening. Michael Denning, seventy-two Stevens Avenue. I thank you to the board, present and past, for all the work you've done for the district, besides just on this project alone. That said, in what's coming out of Washington shortly is a new tax bill. I think that scares people to put their own taxes up. That five or six hundred dollars, in addition to our operating costs, are going to go up if we keep under the cap at one point five percent. So, now with, I know my tax bill alone is more than ten thousand dollars. Never mind the state side of the income tax. So, I think that's going to affect how some people do vote. In addition to that, as stated, it will improve our property values by having a better school district. The great thing about living here is, and we can see it all around town, people don't necessarily care about their property values because we want to stay here. We don't want to sell and leave. I take care of two ninety-three-year-old ladies on either side of the school here and they're here forever. And they're not worried about their value because they're going to die in their house. That's where they want to be. So, it does help property value, yes, don't get me wrong. But some people, you know, we love this community. We want to stay here forever. So, that said, if there is a failure on this bond, are there other options that you're exploring? Such as, they're not sexy, but trailers for classrooms that we could put behind Cottle, that you can add some classroom space temporarily, because if you don't get started till twenty twenty-one, and then that's going to be the summer, and then they have to stop work for some aspect during the school year, depending how far they get.
And those are, those are some of the things that we are going to have our architects work on. That was the resolution that we passed tonight. That is one of the options. They are going to research for us. They're going to give us a budget for that. It, it, is it, can it even happen? Do we have the space for it? Is it a possibility? And what will it cost? So, those are the types of things that we are going to ask the architects to get back to us, that we can have that information and we can share that information with everybody. So, yes, we are looking into all of those things. And, and your comments about the new tax law, I, I think is a reality for, for folks. So, these are all, these are the challenges and then this is the complexity of, of what we're trying to do here. So, it, it does need to be taken into consideration and it's real for people. You know, this is real. And, you know, it's, for every, for every stage that you're in, it's difficult. You know, when you're, you come here and, and you're young homeowners and you're, and you, you know, you're struggling just to get in, it's tough for that extra amount, but there's a value there. And if you're on, on the far end of it, it's difficult because you want to stay here and you may be on a fixed income. And so, it's a tough nut to crack. And I understand all of that. I completely do. I believe this board does and I believe the past boards have. We have been fiscally responsible here for the last six years. We have done a very good job of handling our district's money well. We felt that that was something that would give this community confidence that we have handled your money well. But it's still difficult to ask for and it's true. So, it's something that we need to, to figure out.
I mean, it's a great district, eleven hundred kids. Now, as a family, because everybody's got three and four and five, so the family numbers come down. But, you know, twelve hundred and eighty-one, I think it is, single-family homes. You know, I think the majority of the people here are all homeowners, not co-op owners or renters. They're all homeowners. So, it affects us as single-family homeowners more than it does somebody who's renting and using the system and moving on, but to get them out to vote as well. In my campaign for supervisor, I did a robo-call. So, as far as doing a mailing, which costs five thousand dollars, robo-call for under two hundred dollars, you could do a robo-call where it's a recorded message. You can say in favor, not in favor, whatever. Just say that there is a bond vote. Please get out and vote. And by doing that, getting out to all the voters, you may get defeated, but at least you have the message out there to get the bodies to show up to vote. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara Galati, ninety-seven Middle Road. I also wanted to say something about module classrooms. Because truth of the matter is that Cottle is stuffed to capacity now. It will be next year and it will be the year after. So, even if the bond does go up, we still have not enough classroom space for Cottle. Those classrooms are packed. They're overcrowded. They have too many children in them. So, we need to do something now for the kids that are there now. So, I would like the board to look into something like that. They're not a bad thing. In my district, we had two separate module classrooms before we put our extension on. And I think it also then shows the community that this is a need. You know, we need classroom space. This is what we had to do. And they're not bad for children. They're perfectly beautiful classrooms for children that could still learn. So, I would, would like the district to consider module classrooms. I think it would be a good thing to do. And then if the bond doesn't go through, which hopefully it would, then at least we've made a difference and we've done something, and we've done something now instead of in two years.
Thank you. Thank you, Tara. Anybody?
Jennifer Snyder, ninety-nine Middle Road. I agree with what everyone has said tonight and I feel like almost everyone here is in favor of the bond. I just want to know, when you guys, you analyzed the data, did you guys get any more feedback about the people who said no? Or the, you know, what percentage of them had kids in the school or, because I, I agree. If we put it out there, I think more people are going to come vote. It's hopefully going to pass, but I want to know why people didn't vote, because I don't want more of those people coming out. So, I want to know, like, what was, do you have any data on that? Feedback on that?
Publicly? The data that we have?
Um, no, we usually don't. But, you know, the, the board has done an analysis. We can see demographics of how people vote. So, by age group, what we can't see is, you know, how they voted, yes or no. So, but you look, by looking at the demographics, you know, there's certain age brackets where I think it's pretty safe to assume that these are parents and, and these are non-parents, potentially grandparents. And in looking at it, you know, we think the percentage of, of parents was, was on the low side. You know, we own some of that. You, you know, as far as, like I said, you know, the, the mailer problem was a serious one. You could argue that, you know, reaching the community at large, you know, may have also encouraged more no. It's hard to predict, you know, what the difference would have been. But we're looking at the demographics and we noticed that, you know, many parents did not. And, and we only can go by what people are telling us. I think Allison, you know, she was very helpful as our PTA president. She did bring us some valuable feedback. We've gotten a good number of emails. And, and I, I, you know, my judgment and in doing those fifteen focus groups, in some cases, I spoke to five people or three people. But in other situations, I had thirty or forty people. And you did get feedback, like I said, I think the only negative feedback that I really was getting, not about the design, not about the goals of, of, of the project itself, but about the expense. And someone mentioned, Mr. Denning, the, the, the tax reform. I heard several people talk about that. That news started hitting a week before. And a number of people, I had individual conversations. I tried as much as possible to call people back when they called me. It was busy. But I had several people bring that up. And I think the fear of the unknown, because it hasn't fully been digested yet as far as what, what this tax reform mean, means for individuals. I think sometimes the fear of the unknown gets people concerned and when in doubt, maybe vote no. But I, I had no specific criticism about the project itself. That, that did not happen. And then I think there were many people who just said, we, we assumed, as Allison said, we assumed it was going to pass.
Right. That's what I think the majority was. But I did hear from Steve and I think say that some people voted no because it wasn't enough, which I found crazy. But like, is, did you get any other feedback like that? Any other kind of?
And that was the only other thing. I will say, I was at the middle school concert that Steve mentioned. And not only were people seven or eight deep in the back of the auditorium, there were people in the hallway who could not see there and were complaining. And, and again, you know, much earlier, we, we were thinking about restoring that auditorium. But the feedback again was just, you know, financially, that seemed to be maybe a bit too ambitious. So, we scaled it back. But again, I think it's all, yeah, and there were some people that said, you're not doing enough. That, that, that came up here and there.
But that could also, but someone else said that you could do that in the future. So, if you could maybe get that information out with the information this time too, that passing this bond does not. passing this bond does not preclude any future additional things being done. So, you get those people in too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else? All right. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and for all of your feedback. It's very much appreciated. And, like we said earlier, we will know more in January, when we come back after the new year. So, again, to wish everybody the happiest, merriest of the holiday season. Enjoy, and Happy New Year to all.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Pete second. Ram, all in favor?